Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and to dive into your word together. We thank you for a framework. Framework that comes out of relationship, a loving relationship with you. You love us so much that you were willing to send your son to die for us. Jesus, you love us so much that you were willing to come, take on frail flesh, live your life as the perfect lamb without spot or blemish. You suffered a death that we deserve. And dear Lord, you rose again from the dead, that you would raise us to give to us your spirit this day, that he who has gotten this on this one true faith in you would counsel and comfort and guide and lead and mature us in this most holy faith for the days in which we live. In your name we pray, amen. So out of that, well, come on in, y'all. You know, you were all standing there in the cafe as I walked by you. You were all just standing there, acting like you had all kinds of time. Julia, can you turn the camera on all those people over there? Just kidding. No? Wow. She should have said no, her pastor. Praise God. Like she's my little sister or something. All right. So we have come to this place where we are at the fifth commandment. And remember, remember now the framework that we're trying to live in, the framework that we're trying to to grab onto and live in and live into this loving relationship between you and Jesus doing life together. He loves you. He inspires your love back for him, and he wants the best for you. He wants a life that's everything and more than you could ever dream that it could be. He wants that life for you. Therefore, he says to you, if you will keep the commands of Almighty God, then you will be blessed if you do them. If you, if you honor one another and obey those who are over you, life will go better for you. If instead of killing one another, you help one another and you grab back on your neighborliness again, your life will go better. If you understand these absolute truths in the economy of who you are, he says to you, it'll go well with you and you will enjoy long life on the earth. And, and you will have a life, if both you and the whole church and the whole culture and the whole country were to do that, you would be blessed. You would be blessed. But as for you, your part is to keep the commands of God because he loves you. And, and, and when it comes to the fifth commandment, last weekend, last weekend, because I'm stuck between my goals and my reality. Have any of you ever been stuck between your goals and your reality? My, my, my goals were that by August 31st, I would be through all six G parts. My reality is that we are just now at the fifth commandment. And even in looking at the fifth commandment, I, I, in my press to keep moving forward, I did not talk about a part of the thing that we always think when we come to the fifth commandment, and rightly so, and that is suicide. Suicide. God loves you. God loves you. And his goal is to get you home to be with him forever in paradise. And so I just wanna, I just wanna look at a couple of passages that give us a grounding and a founding for understanding some things connected to this part of our topic in the fifth commandment, and then we'll move forward. Would somebody read for me Matthew chapter 27? Matthew chapter 27, verse 5. So whenever we teach on and whenever we think about suicide, it doesn't take us long until Judas' name comes up. And this is the passage where it says that he committed suicide, right? And so let's then look at John chapter 17. John chapter 17, verse 12. John chapter 17, verse 10. Would somebody read that? So we get the idea from this word of Jesus himself that Judas is in hell. Right? This is one of the core passages for that understanding of the fact that Judas, who committed the sin of murder, self-murder, it says in the word of God that Judas went to hell. Let's look at another one. Matthew 26. Matthew chapter 26, verse 24. Matthew chapter 26, verse 24. Somebody want to read that one? And so it's, it's the passage we just read at, and it's, it's joined by this passage. And then finally Acts chapter 1, Acts chapter 1, verse 25. Acts chapter 1, verse 25. Acts chapter 1, verse 25 says, oh, we'd better start earlier. So they proposed two men, Joseph called Marsabas, also known as Justice, and Matthias. Then they prayed, "Lord, you know everyone's heart. Show us which of these two you have chosen to take over this apostolic ministry, which Judas left to go where he belonged." All of your life since you were confirmed and taught, what do we believe about Judas? That he's in hell. Okay? And the word of God, the word of God seems, when you look at it in Greek, it's even more clear. When the word of God says what it says about Judas, you, you gain, you grab onto its teaching and, and you leave all judgment up to God. You leave all judgment up to God because he and he alone is judge. And you hear the word of the Lord and, and you interact with Jesus the way that you personally do. The church has taught that Jesus is saying here that Judas went to hell. So when it comes to this fifth commandment and this idea of self-murder, what have you believed about others who commit self-murder in the way that you've been taught in the Lutheran Church Missouri Senate? Have you been, have you people been taught in the LCMS? Y'all look like you have. So what have you, what have you been taught over time about all of those who commit suicide? Yes. So the idea, the idea that many are taught is that those who commit suicide, they, they, they didn't have a chance to repent, and so they go to hell. That's, that's what Jill put in the hopper for us to consider. You notice he was silent as long as he could be. He couldn't, he couldn't, he could not. Go ahead, man. Here's what I, here's what, here's what I would say. Let me take it back. Thank you. Here's what I would say to you in front of God and everybody. Here's what I would say to you. I want Jesus to continue to be the judge over these things. And I want us to be absolutely sure of the character of the one that we worship. And the goal is that he would get all of us home to be with him forever in paradise. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, because we're talking about the fifth commandment, I know that if you sin by killing yourself, it is indeed a sin. Remember what we said last week or the week after? What is it that sins a person to hell? Is it sin? It is unbelief, unbelief. So I live in a relationship. I live in a relationship with my heavenly Father, just like I lived in a relationship with my earthly father. And in the summertime, whenever I would run out the door, my earthly father would say, "Bring the family name back intact." But I always knew that I was his speaks, and I always knew that he loved me. He didn't always like some of the stuff I did, but he always loved me, always loved me. And my forgiveness and my belonging to him was never in question, no matter how I was behaving. No matter how I was behaving. So in relationship and in the waters of your baptism, that Jesus put his name on the dotted line and said to you, "You're mine. I've called you by name, and I've connected you to the victory of the cross in the empty tomb." Therefore, therefore, when we talk about the idea of sinning and then repenting, that's a transactional kind of faith, not a relationship belonging kind of faith. And if your relationship with Jesus is continually just transactional, what happens if you're sinning when you die? Our relationship with Jesus is relational, not just transactional. And we live called by name, forgiven, redeemed, and healed. Now, therefore, what have I said? What have I said? I have said to you that I love the fact that the church has taught down through the years that no one should ever consider suicide as an option for them. No one should ever, and we don't want to put it out there. The idea that killing yourself is ever the right answer, it's always a really, really permanent answer to really, really temporary issues and challenges. And so the church has got to walk alongside and help and, and be there for brothers and sisters in Christ who are really struggling so that they won't get to the bottom of the pit where that would be part of the conversation, either in their head or in their life together. And the church, you know that there was a time when the church thought that it was a sin to dance? You know that? Yes? Now, even though Scripture itself says that there's a time to dance, right? The reason that the church taught that it was a sin to dance is because they didn't want to draw the line where Scripture actually draws the line. Thou shalt not lust. And there was a belief that with the dancing of these kids today, remember that? With the dancing of these kids today, one is going to lead to the other. So let's draw the line way back here and say it's a sin to dance, even though Scripture says there's a sin to dance, there's a time to dance, because if we draw the line way up here, that's too close to where the temptation takes place. I believe that it is a sin to kill yourself. And I don't want anybody to ever think that that's a way to stop the pain. God loves you, and God wants to see you through it. And, and he wants to, he wants to also bring you to some harsh realities because he loves you. He wants you to, he wants you to know about the pain and the scar tissue that they will leave on those that you love most in bet, if you choose that. He wants you to know that he loves you, and there can be, "Yea, though I walk through the valley, I walk through the valley so that I can get up out the other side. There's better days to come." But I want to leave the judgment up to him about whether or not those who commit suicide, above and beyond the testimony we have about Judas, I want to, I want to leave the judgment up to him and not make some kind of blanket statement over every person in every situation just because it's easier that way to make those blanket statements. I know that there are brothers and sisters in Christ who are on medications of all kinds, of all kinds, and they're struggling with the up and the down and the here and the there of the effectiveness of that medication. And, and those who get to a place where it's dark, they may still believe in Jesus. He says to us, "A bruised reed he will not break, and a smoldering wick you will not snuff out." Almighty God says to you, he loves you right where you are, no matter how dark it is. He loves you, and his goal for you is to get you home to be with him forever in paradise. So I would rather leave that judgment about whether or not every single person who commits suicide, whether they go to heaven or hell, I would leave that judgment up to God. But notice what we've done. Notice, notice what someone who takes that action has done. They've put question, and they've put fear, and they've put struggle, and they put pain into the equation of the comfort that we can gain for those who are grieving the fact that they made that choice. Or maybe then, I guess suicide is, is choice, right? It's not just the accident of, that you were talking about, right? Again, I would say to you that, that if my faith is based on my head and my thoughts and my intellect and my ability to have repentance and forgiveness and faith take place in my life, and I'm at this really, really weak point, what I'd rather point people to is the fact that he loves me enough to die for me, and that he has called me by name. And in the midst of my darkness, I would try to, I would try to help the family grieve like the rest of men who have hope, like the rest of men who have hope, not like the rest of men who have no hope. And, but I wouldn't base it on some kind of mental transaction that I hope might have happened as the gun well. I would base it on what he has done for them, not what on they have done at the end of their life. Y'all ought to come to church. Thank you, then. I, I knew a man. Congregation that I served, he was an elder in the church. And he had been struggling. Diagnosis was bipolar. And his swings, I mean, this is 30 years ago. And so all kinds of things aren't the same as they are today in this regard. Either diagnosis or medication or treatment, it's all kinds of steps have been taken forward. It's still gravely difficult and hard. But it's not the, the mountain top and the valleys might not be as high and shallow and low as, as it was then. And this man was on this roller coaster ride of trying to get his medications figured out. And at one of the deepest places, he, he committed suicide. Elder in the church. And, and it brought, it brought us to this place of, where do I throw myself? Where, what do I, what do I do with this? And I throw myself on the character of the God that we worship. Throw myself on the, on what he has done to provide for us victory over life and death. Romans chapter 8, 31 to 39. Let's go there. And then I'll come to y'all. Romans 8, 31 to 39. Romans chapter 8, if you could run your life with one chapter in all of the Bible that wasn't like Sermon on the Mouse stuff, it would be Romans chapter 8. Romans chapter 8, 31 to 39. Somebody, somebody. Tom, would you read? I, I need a pastor to proclaim this one. We have a, we have a line here. There's a line of demarcation here. When I, let's say it's me. It's me and Paula that are facing this, and I'm in the bed. If, if I say, well, I can't talk. So, so if she comes to the place where they say to her, "Look, he's not going to make it, and we want to give him this and stop his life right now." There's a line here for us to pray about, to think about, and apply individually to our own lives and the lives of people that we know and love most in bet. And the line is, if I am going to withhold medication or called, we used to call them heroic measures, right? If we're going to withhold that with the idea that we are putting this person into the hands of the Lord, and their time and their days are in the hands of the Lord, we believe that to be a godly thing to do. But if I am going to put myself in the position of judge, and I am going to, in effect, do something that's going to cause their death, that's over the line. That's over the line. Regardless of how many days the doctors tell me I left, I have left, and what kind of life that will be for them, I want to be able to keep God in control of the days that I have and the way that I live them. And so as you counsel one another, and as you live through the god awful experience of being in that room and, and struggling to make those decisions, understand that, that if, if I, if I give them medicine to keep them comfortable, that's one thing. If I give them medicine in such a way that it is going to kill them, and I put them out of their misery, that's, that's a whole different set of conversations than giving them medication to keep them comfortable, right? And, and I, having been in a lot of hospice rooms, they also take very, very seriously that line of demarcation, right? Very, very seriously. And so this bill, this law that's trying to go through would muddy and take away that line of demarcation and put physicians in charge of being able to cross the line and end life. That is really, really difficult and hard, harder than we could imagine. Wait a minute. It's not your turn. Was that what you were going to say a while ago?
Yeah.
Sorry, man. You should have went first. She's, she's going twice. It is in relationship to the fourth commandment that it is said. The fourth commandment is the first commandment that's given with the promise that you can rightly apply to all the rest of them. Because, because now what we did is that we began the second table of the law that's all about your earthly relationships. And, and so your life is going to go a lot more smoothly, and you're going to be blessed if you don't steal one another's stuff, right? Yes. Yeah. When you go in, so you need to speak up because you're on camera right now. So the statement was, when you go into the hospital, one of the things that you do at the very beginning is, is decisions are around, do not resuscitate, and, and those kinds of things. And so we, and so you want to, you want to pray about this because it's, it's some version of this, some version of the way that my body is going to stop pumping, unless the Lord comes again first, come Lord Jesus. But some version of this is going to happen to me, and my loved ones are probably maybe going to have to make some decisions. Now, I know it won't be hard for them. Get him, hey, we're, he's done with us, we're done with him. Go ahead and take it. But, sorry. And that's on camera, too. Praise God. Oh, Lord. We can hold this up for them. No, I'm just sorry. Having, having been in that situation as the pastor in the room with a wife who had a husband who was on respirator, and we were trying to make that decision, here's how we prayed about it. We, in the midst of the tears, in the midst of the god awful situation that she was in, we prayed about what we've already said here. I want to, I want to get you into a situation where, let's just call him Bill, where, where Bill is in the hands of the Lord, and we leave it up to the Lord whether or not he continues here or the Lord takes him home. And so if you believe, if you believe that keeping him on this respirator is going to give him opportunity to have life, then, then let's stay at it. But if you believe, along with the doctor's diagnosis, that the only thing keeping him alive is what's happening because of the machine, then perhaps we can, we can turn the machine off and see what the Lord does, and see what the Lord does, but then put it back into his hands. And, and Bill went home to be with the Lord. Here's the other thing. When did Bill go home to be with the Lord? Right? I mean, if the only thing that was happening was mechanically moving the heart muscle to keep it, but the brain was not going, and perhaps the Lord had already taken him home, and all we were doing was keeping the body moving. Maybe. Look, how in the world would I know? Aren't you glad I'm not judge? I, this is a God sized set of issues. And so when you, when you enter into this journey, I want to try to bring us back up so we can move forward. Y'all okay? I want to, when it comes to this commandment, understand that Almighty God loves you, and he wants life for you from its conception all the way through the time when he gets you home. He wants a particular life for you that is blessed by him all along the way, and everything and more than you ever imagined that it could be. And in the hardest, most darkest points of your life, his love for you in commanding you is to give you a framework and wish to live so that you can then make decisions in ungodly moments, in really, really difficult moment along the way. And so it's this kind of discernment around this that's imperative for both of us, for all of us. And it's a great to be able, when you're not in this situation, to pray about it, to think about it, and to get grounding around it. So that then, God forbid, if you ever do enter into it, you would have a framework upon which to even think, to even think. And hopefully you'll have godly account, godly counsel around you at that moment as well. On a lighter note, let's move on to adultery. Praise God. Okay. Yeah. I don't know what made me thought I was just going to fly through this. So in your catechism, if you look in your catechism, find the sixth commandment in the meeting, and we'll read responsibly. Let's read the sixth commandment together. Here we go. "You shall not commit adultery." What does this mean? "We should fear and love God so that we lead a sexually pure and..." We should fear and love God so that we lead a sexually pure and decent life in what we say and do and husband and wife love and honor each other. Maybe we should just stop class so you can bring Elaine back with you next week. Just kidding, sorry. He's getting married. Um, so, um, so first, um, first and foremost, God has a, God has a framework at the very, at the very heart of our life together and at the heart of, of his worldview and the way we relate to one another is that first and foremost, it is a relationship with him. That's why Luther in every one of these explanations to the commandments begins by saying, we should fear and love God. So that out of that relationship with him, here's how we treat one another, right? We saw it in the fourth commandment, we've seen it in the fifth commandment, it's also true in the sixth commandment. God, God wants, God wants us as a church to hold on to the beauty and the definition and the identity of marriage in his eyes. So that then we hold on, uh, and, and stand our ground lovingly, stand our ground in a society that has lost its way in everything connected to everything, especially connected to sexuality and merit and family. Um, and, and so Almighty God says to us in this commandment, I wanna bless you. I wanna bless you. I wanna give you, I wanna give you holy marriage. The word of God says to us, uh, he made them in the image of God, male and female. Male and female, he created them in the image of God. Um, and then he says, all the way back in Genesis, he says, therefore, a man will leave his father and mother, be united to his wife and the two of them will become one flesh, one foot. Um, and, and that order and that, uh, definition of male and female, um, if I was Satan, I'm not, but if I was and I wanted to bring the church to its knees and destroy it, which is the goal, I would do everything that I could to rip apart holy marriage and rip apart family and the culture and render the worldview of marriage and family in the church to be antiquated and, what's the word? Intolerant. We know who the enemy is and we know what he's up to. Right? Um, and, and so this idea of, uh, a, 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 a man of God, um, any of you married, John and, praise God. Teresa, would you two come here? It's not gonna hurt. It's not gonna hurt. Um, okay. Dear man of God, Almighty God says to you on behalf of your children and your grandchildren, I need you to love me first. Right? Jesus says to John, I need you to love me first and let me define and inspire out of the heart and the core and the center of your relationship with this woman of God. I need you to love me first so that then I can show you how to love her. Woman of God, Jesus says to you, I need you to love me first and then let me define and inspire the way you love that man of God. And when he is at the heart of who they are together in their identity, he sets up for them a worldview that they hand down from one generation to another, right? So that then they raise kids that love Jesus first. And then that defines and inspires the way they love or even the way they go after finding someone to love. Because he also says to them, you should not be unequally yoked together with unbelievers. Um, and, and so, and, and so they then, they then take off on the journey of a lifetime together. And, and you know that great Lutheran theologian, Mike Tyson? Mike Tyson said, one of the smartest things I've ever heard a Lutheran theologian say. He says, everybody has a plan till they get punched in the face. Uh, we all, we all took off together with this idea that you would stand before the altar of God. Where was the altar of God that you stood before? Emmanuel Lutheran in Despings, and they do good work there, right? And so, and so they stood there, you, 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 you made your promises before God and before one another, right? Um, and they had, there were stars in their eye. He married up. And, and as a result of that, they had this plan. Probably never put into words, but they had this worldview that God was going to bless them along their way and they were gonna have 2.4 children and they were going to have, uh, and they were gonna be champions for Christ and they're gonna find godly women and godly men and they were gonna have holy marriages and that's the way that was gonna go. Everybody has a plan till they get punched in the face. And life happens, life happens, right? Any of you experienced your own version of that? Life happens and kids and, and wow. And the spouses they choose and, you can sit down, I'm sorry. Let's give him a hand. In the midst of it all, Satan wants to attack. In the midst of it all, Satan wants to attack by, by doing, uh, certain things. He himself or his demons may be at work in their lives. In the Middleman family tree, there may be places where they've let Satan get a, a foothold in their life. But, but probably not. It's because you see, we also live in a world where there's an unholy trinity. We live in a place where when Satan was kicked out of heaven, he was kicked to Roswell. Where he prowls around like a roaring lion looking for those he can devour. So him, his demons, they are at work trying to take apart marriage and family and, and do many other things as well. But one of the core things that they're trying to do to Christ and his bride, the church is to rip apart marriage and family. The other thing that happens though is that, uh, is that, uh, we'll take them off the hook. I live in a fallen bag of bone. I know you can tell that. And I am in the process of returning to the dust. And my brain, if it were not, if it were not constantly under attack by the Holy Spirit trying to steer me in a better direction, I would constantly give in to the passions and the desires of my sinful nature. Just take my word for it. But so would you. So would you. And not only, not only do I fail and fall into the temptations that my sinful nature brings to me on a daily basis, but I also live in a world that is full of sinners and sinful opportunity. And therefore, I'm constantly under attack in these ways that can rip apart holy marriage and family and render it broken. Everybody has a plan till they get punched in the face. And sometimes it's not Satan punching me face to face. Sometimes it, it happens because sinful people do sinful things. And sometimes it happens because I am a sinner and I open myself up to stuff. And in the midst of it all, God loves you. God loves you. And, and he wants you to know and understand that you personally are worth waiting for. I have three sons. I have three sons. Now I have three grandchildren. And when my sons were old enough to go through confirmation with me, oh, Lord, uh, I was, I was terrible. My sons, I, I would stand them up and I would say in front of God and everybody, I'd say, uh, son, you gonna get married someday? And my second and my third son would say, Aaron told us this day was gonna come. And, uh, son, you gonna get married someday? Yes, Dad, we're gonna get married someday. You're gonna, you're gonna find a godly woman, yes? Yes, Dad, we're gonna find a godly woman. And you're gonna get married, then you're gonna move in together, right? Yes, Dad, we're gonna do that in order. And so let's just assume that, that you're standing at the altar and I'm doing the wedding and you're making your promises to God and this woman that God has brought into your life. And, and we could reach back in your future wife's life to a date that she's on tonight with some other guy. As her future husband, son, how would you want him to treat her? And then I would say, so you're going out tonight, right? You're going out with this girl. You think you're gonna marry her? No, Dad, we're just going out. Well, if you're not gonna marry her, why are you going out with her? Cause she's hot. You think she'll get married someday? Well, of course, she's hot. On behalf of her future husband, how are you gonna treat his future wife tonight on this date? Because Almighty God wants her to get to her wedding day so that she can give herself to her husband and not having given herself to any other. So that her life, she's worth waiting for, you're worth waiting for. And, and Satan does so much to undermine, uh, undermine that truth in the life that he wants for us and for our children. Open your Bibles to the Sermon on the Mount, Matthew, chapter five, Matthew, chapter six. Matthew, chapter five, verse twenty-seven through thirty. Matthew, chapter five, verses twenty-seven through thirty, Jesus is talking. Somebody wanna read that for us? Yes, please. Okay, that's good. Thank you. So again, Jesus is trying to get us to this place where we realize if I'm gonna have the kind of life that he wants for me, I'm gonna be faithful to my spouse and she's gonna be faithful to me and God is gonna bless that and we're gonna have, we're gonna have the opportunity to have a life together that is wholly dedicated to him and to one another and be blessed in that. He wants that blessing for you. And, and so he wants to give you this fence, this first use of the law. But then deeper than that, he doesn't want any of us to think that we've kept any of them so that we all know and understand that yea, but by the grace of God go any of us. And so he says this to them, you've heard that it was said to the people long ago, don't commit adultery, but I tell you that anyone who looks at a woman, anyone who looks at a man, ladies, you don't guilty. He wants to show you your sin and your need for a save. Guilty. But it all comes out of this love for you and what he wants for you and the reward of waiting and doing it the way that he wants to have it done for you. So Luther says in the commandment, he says, you shall not commit adultery. Um, we should fear and love God so that we lead a sexually pure and decent life in what we say and do, husband and wife, love and honor each other. Um, in the commandment, in the catechism, uh, we talk about, uh, we talk about, uh, four or five different kinds. What does God forbid in the sixth commandment? A, God forbids divorce except for marital unfaithfulness, adultery or desertion. Almighty God would say to us, I love you. And I wanna begin all the way back at the life choices you make at the beginning of relationship. Want you to choose well. Want you to choose and not be, not be, uh, not be yoked together at the very beginning, not be yoked together with an unbeliever. Um, because what do, what does unbelief and, and faith have to do with one another? They're entirely different worldview is what he says in that, in, in that passage. And so he wants us to begin in the right way, in the right place and, uh, and be blessed along the way as we do. He also, he also wants you to be able to stand before the altar of God and make your promises to God and to one another in such a way that you are worshiping the same God and you are, uh, bound together, making promises to that God who's gonna be at the heart and the core and the center of that life together um, in the way, in, in the way that, uh, that he designs and he wants to bless. In this section, in this section, then he says, uh, to us, when it's broken, uh, when it's broken, counseled a lot of, counseled a lot of people whose marriages were broken. About ninety percent of the time, you know, eighty percent of all statistics are made up on the spot, right? Um, and so, and so the number ninety is really arbitrary in that sentence. Uh, ninety percent of the time, um, the couples who come and sit down with me and say to me, pastor, fix us, it was way too late by the time, time they got. Um, it's ten till, it's way too late for us to enter into this conversation. So, uh, so talk about a teaser. I'll leave you here. We'll come back to this next week. Um, and it'll be the PG version of everything you see. Let's pray. Dear Father, I thank you for brothers and sisters in Christ, partners in the gospel and friends. And I ask you, dear Lord, that you would show us your love and the framework for our lives. Uh, that in the midst of the life we live, as we fail and fall and, and brokenness comes our way, heal us, forgive us, pick us up, clean us off and allow us the joy that comes from your restoration and your love in the midst of the brokenness. So dear Lord, be with us. In your name we pray. Amen.